Yes.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Is six thirty?
I call this meeting to order for May twenty fifth, twenty twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty five. Will first please call the roll.
Mayor Richard Bass.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald. I know she's there, but I didn't hear her. Commissioner Josh Rudin.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
There.
Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
Present.
City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City Attorney Patricia Bengochet.
Here.
The clerk is present, Mr. Mayor. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. Everyone would stand and face the flag. We're going to have the invitation that will be given by Commissioner Payne. And we make standing for the pledge that will be given by Mayor Pro Tem Sykes.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you so much for this day, Lord, another day that we can come and and do the business of the city, Lord. And, Lord, I want first and foremost to pray over our city, Lord. Each and every citizen, Lord, I pray that you would just be with them. Bless our city, Lord, as we begin to, I don't know, open up and see more of that, Lord, just be with them, be with our business owners, Lord, as they try to navigate this and all the things that they need to do. Just watch over each and every one of them, Lord. And we ask, Lord, as we spend this time, Lord, talking about the business of the city of Alamo Gordo, Lord, you would bless our time. Give us open hearts, open minds, ears to hear, Lord, and we ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. If we call the United States one nation under God, equal to all, let's seek justice for all.
Thank you, Rachel. Well, move on to approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, if I can please pull an item.
One. Oh, okay. Very good. Our city attorney?
Thank you. I just need to pull off item thirteen, Consider an Act Upon a Memorandum of Understanding with the International Space Hall of Fame Foundation regarding the Fourth of July fireworks.
Okay.
Did somebody make the motion?
No, 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 we're pulling items, pulling items. Would like a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted. Are you moving on?
I would like to move to approve the agenda with the adjustment, removing item thirteen.
I have a motion to approve the agenda from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Payne. Will first please call the roll.
Um, I don't call roll on approval of the agenda, sir.
No, I apologize. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. The agenda is approved. Um, did we have any public comment this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments.
Move on to our city manager's report. Brian Caesar will give that report. Brian. We can't hear you.
You're muted.
We can't hear you.
I need Stephanie over here to work the mute button for me. I just have a few items for, few items for tonight. Keep Alamo Gordo Beautiful held the great Alamo cleanup in conjunction with Keep Alamo Gordo Beautiful Great American Cleanup Saturday, March fifteenth. They saw approximately a hundred and twenty volunteers go to support the efforts. The projects that were completed were painting the railing at the balloon park, painting the skate park, water ceiling, the decking at the zoo pond and aviary, litter and litter eradication in Alamo Park. The total volunteer time was valued at approximately ninety-seven hundred dollars. Um, about two and a half weeks ago, Senator Ray Ben Luhon was in town. And we talked about a number of very important projects to the, to the city. Uh, we received guidance on how to apply for hopefully some money through the congressionally, congressionally directed spending request. Uh, that's going to be on the next, hopefully the next infrastructure bill. The projects that we're going to put in for. Uh, one is the pivot transmission line replacement. That's the effluent line out to the big sprinklers at the airport. Uh, Benito Lake infrastructure improvements, uh, trying to take care of the one million dollars that is coming out of the city coffers for that project. Um, oh, I should mention that they were looking for shovel-ready projects. And by shovel-ready, all the clearances are done. We have the right of way. And, um, the projects are designed. Uh, the next one is the scenic drive extension to Mesa Verde Ranch Road. Uh, that's obviously out to bid right now. Uh, next year's street maintenance project. Uh, the phase one of parallel pipeline extension, that's the twenty-four inch line coming from Snake Tank into Alamo Gordo, uh, bringing the, um, uh, water to be desalinated. And the last, uh, is, um, rehab of various potable water storage reservoirs. So we have five of our main, uh, reservoirs still left to, to be completed, ranging anywhere from about one point nine million to two point two million dollars apiece. Um, we're also including three of the smaller tanks, the West Side Elevated Tank, uh, the only elevated tank that the city has over by the Family Fun Center. Um, we haven't used that tank yet, but it's already due for interior and exterior coating. Uh, the Prater Tank out, out south of town and the Upper Alamo Tank. Uh, and last but not least, uh, dependent upon what happens with the rest of this week, uh, I plan on taking off Friday and having a four-day weekend. I asked before Stephanie did. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, we'll move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Would any commissioner like to make any comments? Um.
First off, can we go ahead and vote to give Stephanie Friday off instead of Brian? No, that's a kid. But, uh, no, I had a, uh, this is probably more of a question for Brian, but I just went through that intersection out there at first in the bypass. Uh, have we got any kind of an update of when the state's looking at potentially getting a light in there? That, that intersection is getting more and more dangerous by the day after.
So the last time I spoke with, with DOT, uh, actually, we had a Zoom conference, uh, I want to say about a month and a half ago. Uh, they had, they are doing the preliminary engineering at this point. Um, so.
Clear.
So it's, it's out at least two to three years before, uh, before we'll see a, a signal go in there. They haven't, um, I know they don't have money appropriated for next year, uh, just for the, just for the study and engineering portion of it.
Okay. My, my last question is, uh, you know, in the last meeting, we briefly discussed, not briefly, but we discussed the fireworks, the MOU and the, the donate donation. We were told we had a, a written, uh, interpretation or a written opinion on the, on the law. Uh, I think we asked to see that at the last meeting. Have we gotten that yet? Or where we at on that?
It's available in my office anytime anyone wants to come read it.
Can you send it to the commission via email or?
We never send those out historically. Um, we always just have them available in my office is how we've always done it. Because if we start releasing them and they get out, it's, we're gonna have to release all of them. But if you want to come by and see it, it's printed and on my desk, ready for you at any time.
Then do we, have you asked Brian about the day after the meeting, uh, what it cost us to get that opinion?
We don't have invoice yet. We typically invoice forty-five to sixty days out. As soon as I get an invoice, I'll let you know, Commissioner Reardon, and I'll tell you exactly what it cost us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes?
I just have a few comments that I just wanted to bring to you guys. First of all, Josh Sykes is right here in the room with us. And I agree with Brian. Josh did a really nice job with the Keep Alamo Gordo Beautiful. But in addition to that, he's done an outstanding job. If you come look at the Civic Center, I mean, it's looking really good. And I know that a lot of work has been put into getting ready for the Fourth of July. So as long as you're here, I want to keep you a hand. The other thing, we just came off our Public Works Week, and I thought that the city did a really nice job promoting that on Facebook. Uh, a lot of the public works, workers, uh, go unsung, and I really do believe that they've been doing a great job. We see orange barrels everywhere. We know there's a lot of work going on. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that happened and that we should be grateful for the work that they put in. Thank you, Larry, for everything you've done. Um, also, I, I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to see the statement put out by Chief Denton with regard to the police contract. That was really nice news. I mean, for once, it looks like we're making headway with getting more money to pay more experienced police officers. And that's the kind of news we need to be telling people. So often, we hear as commissioners that we don't have enough police, that we're not paying these people properly, but it looks like we're on the right road. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that. And then last but not least, Michelle McKinstry-Berdeau has done an outstanding job with an organization called Heal. Uh, it's a wellness group. They put up in Washington Park eighteen stone monuments of, of critters that are native to our area. And they set it up like a scavenger hunt. I just hope that we all take advantage of going to look at that stuff. That's a very nice project. I, I've talked about it on the radio a few times. I think it's, it's not only cute, it's informational, educational. So I just wanted to get that word out. Anybody who's not familiar with it, go to Washington Park in Lipton. They're just the cutest thing when they've got a spokes kangaroo, it's a, a little rat named Calahari, that, uh, that is sponsoring a coloring contest. We are not eligible, but it goes up into, uh, I, I don't know what age group, but it's to promote what's going on with the city. We don't give ourselves enough credit for all the fun things that are happening. So just wanted to bring that up.
K through five.
K through five, okay. And it looks like it'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Mr. Payne?
Couple things, actually. Um, number one, I, uh, you brought up Public Works and, um, I'll bring up community services as well because I've been getting a lot of kudos lately on the parks. Um, I got a lot of friends that walk their dogs. Um, and boy, I, they said, make sure you tell them that the parks here would be really good. So I will admit that I haven't been to the park lately, sorry. But I guess I'm gonna have to go take a look because, um, really, I'm getting a lot of compliments, um, on that. So shout out to you guys. And I know it's just gonna get better um, with this next budget year. So I'm really excited about that. Also, if Brian or, yeah, Brian, if you could just, um, reiterate, I know there was a PSA put out, but, um, we've been talking about the fireworks. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands what it is we're doing for Fourth of July, um, and, and how that is available to the community. So if you could just like go back over that real quick, I would really appreciate that. Just so everybody that's watching will understand what it is that we're doing.
Uh, Commissioner Payne, uh, Josh's item, which is number twelve. Uh, he's actually, or he and Veronica are going to be going over the Fourth of July as part of the.
Very good. Just want to make sure that that's out there so people understand that apparently there's a lot of misinformation. And, uh, I don't typically read it except that, um, I happen to be Facebook friends with the Alamo Gordo Daily News reporter, and she mentioned something. So I said, okay, well, we better bring that one up and put that to rest. So that's good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anyone else have any comment? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda with any staff member or commissioner like to remove any item on the consent agenda. If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Do I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve the consent agenda as presented? Do I hear a second? I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. Will first please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Rudin.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Bass.
Aye.
We want a new business. Item eight, Consider an Act Upon a One-Time Waiver of Annuals fees for Current License Holders for the twenty twenty-one year coinciding with the state. You gonna like some comments on that, Rachel?
Um, yes. So you have this in front of you for Senate Bill Two. Um, they asked, uh, to make it immediate, that they, uh, the, um, beverage, uh, division is going to, or they already did waive the fines for the year for, uh, liquor licenses. Of course, they still have to apply, um, have to put application in. Um, and so we just wanted to mirror what the state is doing. Um, I did put in the agenda packet how many licenses we have, and the total would be six thousand four hundred dollars. Um, however, they are, uh, waiving the city's governmental liquor license, and there's three of those for a total of three thousand nine hundred dollars. So the actual difference is going to be just two thousand five hundred dollars.
Anyone have any comments on that? Do I hear a motion to?
So moved.
Who was that? Uh, motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve item eight, Consider the Act Upon a One-Time Waiver of Annuals Fees to the Current License Holders for twenty twenty-one.
Second.
I, I have a second from Commissioner Reardon. All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Vote opposed, aye? Motion passes seven zero. Move on to item nine, Consider Act Upon Award of a Geo, Geotechnical Engineering Services On-Call Agreement to Wood Enterprises and Infrastructure Solutions. Uh, Nancy Bestor, our project manager, who will give us information on that. Nancy, good evening.
Evening. Um, this is for the award of an on-call agreement for geotechnical services to wood environment and infrastructure solutions. Uh, this agreement provides services like quality, quality assurance testing of materials on road projects. Uh, these firms do asbestos and lead testing when we're demolishing buildings. So those are, that's an example of the types of services that these agreements provide. We put out an RFP in early April, and we received three proposals. The, um, the firms that sent proposals were Wood Solutions, TerraCon, and Design Technologies. I, uh, the scoring sheet is attached to your agenda report. Wood Solutions was the highest score, scoring firm. So, um, so they're the ones that will be awarded the contract if you guys agree.
Have any questions? Good question. Uh, I notice it doesn't have any fiscal impact. What, what's the RFP costing us? That makes sense.
What does an RFP cost us to advertise?
Yeah, well, in here, there's nothing, hold on, just let me get back to it. Like, for our amount budgeted, it's zero. So, I mean, for them, obviously, they're not gonna come workforce for free. It'll just be on a case-by-case basis, or what?
It's, it's based on task orders, Commissioner. So it's gonna be project-dependent, how many buildings we have that we're taking down, uh, et cetera.
So we don't have a set amount for each year or anything like that? It's just case-by-case?
Uh, we don't have a, a set amount. The, if there's going to be geotechnical work, like saying the scenic extension that we're gonna have, uh, this company, uh, Wood Environmental, um, the, the, that cost is built into the project. Do we pull it out of, out of the various projects? If it's on demolition of a, of a structure, that comes out of the project budget that we put aside for, for each individual structure.
Do I have a question? Do I hear a motion to approve item nine, Consider Act Upon Award of Geotechnical Engineering Services On-Call Agreement to Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solution? I have a motion from Commissioner Wright. Do I hear a second? I will second from Commissioner Reardon. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Vote opposed, aye? Motion passes seven zero.
I forget that Commissioner Baldwin's up there. It's scary.
Too quickly, a little bit.
Sorry.
Move on to item ten, Consider Act Upon Request from Fuller Earthworks LLC to Use a City-Owned Hydrant and Meter to Purchase Water From the City For the Purpose of Providing Potable Water To Residential Areas That Have Little or No Access to Drinking Water. We have with us our Public Works Director, Larry Donner. Very good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Commission, City Manager. Uh, tonight, you have in for, in front of you a request from Fuller Earthworks LLC to be able to use city water coming from a, uh, with the utilization of a, uh, a hyd- hydrant meter. Excuse me, to purchase water from the city to provide water to, uh, areas that have little to no access to, of drinking water. This is the, uh, first step, and Mr. Fuller has been advised that if it is approved by the commission, that he will still need to, to submit an application with N M E D, D W B, and, um, get that okayed so that we, that he has permit in order to do this. Uh, Mr. Fuller is here tonight, uh, to answer any questions you might have regarding his, his request.
Anything in this court? Any questions? Do we do this with anyone else? Do we have a situation where we, we, water is purchased like this and sold?
Yes, sir. We, we do have one company that does that, that's Oasis. Uh, their meter is out here by the, uh, by the city yard.
No questions with Mr. Fuller? I have, do I hear a motion to approve item ten?
I have a motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon, or item, to approve item ten, Consider Act Upon a Request from Fuller Earthworks LLC to Use City-Owned Hydrant and Meter to Purchase Water From the City For the Purpose of Providing Potable Water To Residential Areas That Have Little or No Access to Drinking Water. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wright. All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Vote. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Mr. Fuller. We move on to item eleven, Consider Act Upon First Publication of Amendment sixteen twenty-eight, You Were In Unlawful Possession With Marijuana. There you have it. I said you were coming to get some information on that. Good evening.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, City Manager. This is, um, pretty straightforward. As many of you know, in special edition HB two was passed, which makes adult-use cannabis legal on June twenty-ninth. This simply strikes our marijuana ordinance, and, um, it still leaves everybody subject to the state's or, the state's law, which will be enforced. Um, but we're just gonna strike our own and follow the state's law. I did include the state's entire law. It's about a hundred and fifty pages if anyone wanted to read it. And if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Reardon, I had a call on this one this afternoon, uh, and it was actually a really good question, but anybody that we currently have incarcerated for violating this law, will they be released from jail?
Nobody's incarcerated for violating this law. It's a civil penalty.
Civil penalty is just for possession.
Correct. So the, if you read what we currently had, what struck out, it's just, was just a civil penalty, and I'll bring it up if you'd like. Um, but, so what's gonna hap, and that already has changed. And so, um, it was just a fine. It says, so on C one, up to one-half ounce of marijuana shall be issued a penalty assessment and is subject to a fine of fifty dollars. And then it talked about more than half an ounce, but less than an ounce, first offense. And then they go up. It's only when you get to the third offense, I believe, when it, you could be imprisoned. Um, and we don't have, we don't typically put people in jail for marijuana, even when this was a law. Uh, so it's not anybody that we have in jail right now.
Okay. And what about like fines? I mean, I guess if they're already fined for it and they currently owe them, they'll still owe, they won't go retroactive?
That's correct. So if they've already been assessed a penalty of fifty dollars or even a hundred dollars, they've already been convicted. And we won't go back and vacate any convictions on this at this point. That's, that's not what this ordinance contemplates. So it is just moving forward once it's passed. And it does have a, a applicable date of June twenty-ninth in it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Do I hear a motion? A motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve, uh, uh, item eleven, which is considered act upon publication of order in sixteen twenty-eight. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. Will first please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Rudin.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright. Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Bass.
Aye.
Still in there?
I'm still in twenty-nine.
Motion passes.
I'm afraid of.
We'll move on to item twelve, Consider Act Upon Residents in twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, Allowing Staff to Recruit A Part-Time City Center Maintenance Position That Was Laid Off in May twenty twenty, before nineteen. We have with us Josh Sykes, our Special Events Manager, and Ronnie O'Fagan, the Services Director. He'll give us information on that. Uh, they were, uh, Johnson, oh, he's up here. Josh, you're gonna cut off.
I'll start. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Good.
Okay. So, um, Josh is requesting approval for the part-time position to be brought back, and he's gonna cover the Fourth of July event. First to show just how much work goes into one of these special events. Um, and I want to thank Josh and echo some of the commissioners that noticed all the good that he's doing in our community through K A B and through these special events. It's, it's hard work. And so I just, um, he's doing a great job. Uh, thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Director. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Mr. Manager, uh, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. Um, we're gonna go, quickly go through this, uh, product first of Fourth of July, uh, event because it's one of eighteen events we're putting on at the city of Alamo Gordo through this, this fiscal year through June of next year. So, uh, with that said, we'll get started. Uh, Rachel will share her screen.
Look, I, I don't know if you can, Josh, I don't know if you can speak into the mic more, or maybe it sounds really muffled.
It's very difficult to hear you, Josh.
Sorry. Sorry.
How is it now? How is it now?
Go ahead, it's probably not gonna get any better. I just wanted to make sure everybody could hear you.
Rachel, if you'll move on to the next slide. The Fourth of July event is an event that we're putting on for the first time this year. There's gonna be lots of things going on. A lot of this was included in your packets that you've been able to review, so I'm gonna kind of skip through this. If you have any questions, I'll stand for questions at the end. Rachel, if you'll go to the next slide. It's gonna start Fourth of July, Sunday, July fourth, 10:00 AM. I'm sorry, 1:00 PM. This is an older PowerPoint. It was going to start at 10:00 AM. We listened to some of the community members and moved the parade to 1:00 PM. That's the only difference on the slide, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM is when it's gonna start, from 10th in Oregon down to 10th in New York. Next slide. Starting at 4:00 PM, the gates are gonna open to the music festival over at, which we have now called Sounds of Freedom over at the Otero County Fairgrounds. This is a list of things that we are planning on having. Some of this is very fluid and is going to move, move around a little bit and see where we can fit into things and trying to get people into town who can do these activities for us like the Characterist. Next slide. The music festival location, next, is gonna be at the Otero County Fairgrounds. We're gonna utilize the same setup we did in 2019 for Sounds of Freedom, next. We're gonna go through that, go through the day with Sounds of Freedom, having bands and activities for the, for the families of our community, starting at about 9:00 PM that night. We are going to have a fireworks show. Our yearly fireworks show that we've had every year for many, many, many years is going to happen. We're gonna shoot off fireworks out over at the new location for the middle school just adjacent to a Grig Sports Complex. That's gonna be at nine o'clock is when we're gonna be able to show, to have the vendor come in and shoot off those fireworks. Next slide. The Civic Center has been a commodity in our community for many, many, many years. We're getting phone calls two, three, four times a day and emails regarding opening the Civic Center. Next slide. We want to open it based on the New Mexico Red to Green, Red Yellow to Green Turquoise framework that allows for occupancy levels of the large entertainment venue, which is what we are classified at the Civic Center. Next slide. On this slide, you'll see the cost. It doesn't, it doesn't affect us at all this year. I have it budgeted. Next year it will affect us some. Those have been in there. Again, if you have any questions on that, feel free to ask when I stand for questions. Next slide. I am asking for one part-time Civic Center maintenance and they're gonna be scheduled between 29 and 32 hours per week. Again, this employee was laid off or the position was left vacant after the layoffs for COVID-19. Next slide. This is a list of the eighteen other, total of nineteen events that Special Events is planning for our community, starting on May eighth through June 24th of 2022. This is just an overall view of that. Next slide. This is a view, this is a slide of the events for Keep Alamo Bordo Beautiful. It lists out the Great American Cleanup, America Recycles Day, and Monthly Custom Carrying Days. Next slide. And basically what we're asking is that you allow this staff person to be recruited and brought in to help not only the Civic Center events here, but also Keep Alamo Bordo Beautiful events and the special events for the city of Alamo Bordo. And I will stand for questions if there are any.
Do we have any questions with Josh?
How come we didn't ask about this second budgetary? Just asking, you know what I mean? It was like three weeks ago. Can we bring this position up in budgetary?
Commissioner Meriden, I guess I can answer that. We have been, that position was cut. The position was cut and so now that we're opening up, we're gonna have to start filling some of these positions in order to provide, provide events for the community.
We didn't know, and Alex, I'm just being devil's advocate here, but we didn't know three weeks ago that we were going to potentially need this position because the event was going to be opening up. I'm just, you know what I mean? That's the time to look for staff in different positions and that kind of stuff. It's just, you know, been this close. If it was six months down the road from budget, I could understand it. Six down the road. I wonder.
And I know, and you're gonna see more requests unfortunately, because we just don't know how, for some of my other areas, because we just, we didn't know how much we were gonna be able to open up. And so they, so because those positions were cut last year, we have to come back to commission to have them approved. The budget's approved.
That's what I was wondering, something. I know we laid somebody off and it's always unfortunate when we have to cut a position and lay somebody off. Will that person be called back or does it open up to the community to fill that position?
Per HR policy, it does have to go back out for recruitment.
Thank you.
I do want to just inform everybody that the Fourth of July events are all free. They're free to attend, free to get in, free admission. So I do want to reiterate that that is a completely free day for our community, from the parade to Sounds of Freedom to the fireworks show.
What time, I'm sorry, what time does the Sounds of Freedom, what time should we say that starts?
Sounds of Freedom starts at 4:00 PM and it's gonna run through 10:00 PM.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approved Resolution 2021-19, Allowing Another Staff Person to Recruit in Part-Time Civic Center Maintenance Position. Second?
I have a second motion, but I got one more quick question. Do we anticipate how many positions that you'll be coming back to us, asking to fill before the end of the year?
Commissioner, the next, the next batch that you'll see come through, and it's because we keep getting, changing guidance from the state, will be from the recreation center. So as they're allowed to open up more, to where we have more people in the pool, we're gonna need more lifeguards, where we can have the summer sports, the youth programs, et cetera. Heather, I believe it's Heather is going to be bringing that to commission at the next meeting. We don't, we want to go ahead and get this advertised because it is taking a lot longer to hire people currently or even to get applications in. So we want to have, we want to have that process moving so that come July one, if everything that we have been told by the state does happen and the governor, Department of Health, they open everything back up 100%, but we are still waiting for guidance in certain areas, especially community services, because there are some different rules for like the senior center and some of the other services that community service provides. But we want to be ahead of that process, so we're not waiting till July one, everything is open and now we can't open up the pool to more, to more people because we don't have lifeguards or have the summer program because we don't have the staffing to man that portion of it.
Motion on Resolution 2021-19 approval. We have a second from Commissioner Reardon. Will both please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Rudin.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright. Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Bass.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Move on to item fourteen, appointments to boards and committees. We have, go ahead and read all, any reports that we have open and it's very fortunate, I believe, and it's the first time we've seen this few vacancies on all of our different councils and boards. But the airport zoning board has one vacancy. We have no applications for that. Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council has one vacancy and this vacancy is due to the fire internal, Stephen, and she is asked to be reappointed by review for reapplication and I'm going to reappoint her to that position if there's no objection from the commission. She is so appointed and I want to thank her for her past service for one year that she's been on that council and thank her for asking to be reappointed and we appreciate the service.
I just got one more thing. I meant to say it earlier today, but I'd heard a rumor in that call, City Manager Commissioner today, a gentleman by the name of Benny Corvus, he used to run the Direct Center for us. I found out today that he packed away over the weekend. So they just wanted to mention that. So he was, he worked in the city for quite a few years over at Direct Center, well liked.
Anyone else? Not if there's no further business to be good to the city. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner Payne to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Aye.